To do those calls and um that was met. We told you that we'd be able to get to do increased community outreach because full time people would be available to attend community meetings at night, to do inspections at night, and it also would allow us to have a paramedic at night that would provide a higher level of service, but also a higher level of revenue because those calls are billed out at a different rate. We were able to do that. The last thing that we said that we would do was that we could possibly decrease the use of overtime and call firefighter wages by increasing the coverage of full time. And we're not ready to say anything about that yet. We, um, the town negotiated with the full-time unions that took a little bit of time. So we don't have the data yet to, to be able to analyze the effect on overtime and, and um call wages. So I don't wanna um, I don't wanna speculate on that. So that's the one thing that we're not sure about. The other thing that's become really clear is that um, I've been talking to Pam Rogers and our payroll, our pay um categories don't match up the data that we're trying to collect. So part of that is from the old, old ways of doing things. Our payroll category um account numbers are me- mirror the police department. And so um, I've been working with Pam and we're gonna um try to make payroll categories that let us separate out, for instance, call firefighters coming back on a call versus full-time firefighters coming back on a call. So that will give us um very accurate data. Right now, we, some of it speculative, but um more to come on this. We just haven't had. They've only been um working their new schedule since December thirtieth, so we just don't have the, the time in yet. Um, just the steps that we've taken to get here. Some of this is review from last year. We've um worked on a lot of recruitment for call firefighters. We did some mailings. We um reached out via phone. We um had some Facebook campaigns. We revamped our explorers, our junior firefighters. We've had a lot of senior internships. We're actually, our senior internship this year is totally based on um a promotional video for the fire department. So we're really excited about having uh the student from ASCO here. With that, through the town, we created an incentive um model where people were given fifteen dollars a night to be available to respond to calls. Um, and then we incrementally increased our staffing to cover um nighttime and overnight. And last year, we hired two additional firefighters. Um, that brings our total to six people and then myself. So um, those two firefighters um fill seventy-five percent of the shifts. So that was a, a big step that we took for this last year. Here they are, the two firefighters. Um, through the budget process, we went through the budget process and got the um the go-ahead to put the two firefighters in. And for last year, they were used, you all know, we used our one-time funds to for the, the wages for those um firefighters. And what we knew was projecting ahead that we would be able to cover that cost moving forward in the budget. And so um, with the, um, with the town accountant, we um looked at the revenue and um that can, that was able to be, um, those numbers were able to be covered there. And we're continuing to see that revenue increase, um, projected revenue increase as well. There they are. Um, that's Peter and Jason and um, they're doing great. Um, this is their schedule now. Just to um, to list, to kind of describe it right now, I, I think of it as two twenty-four hour shifts in a day. Um, and what you can see, this just shows you that pale yellow shift is available. So one twelve-hour shift is available uh twenty-four hours a day. Other than that, there's two full-time people working. For our proposed fiscal twenty-four budget, we've changed it a little bit from what the budget that you see there. Um, we're proposing to increase our full-time roster from six firefighters to eight firefighters. That would give us two full-time firefighters twenty-four hours a day. And now we would be doing that using existing funds. So the proposed schedule would um cover seven days a week with two full-time firefighters and um, we would take that funding, um, we were moving that funding from call wages. So um, again, any one of these schedules is, would be suggest, subject to collective bargaining. Um, so it would look like this. There'd be two, there'd be, a group is two people. So it would be, this is their schedule. It's the same schedule they're working now. It's the same as, uh, it's always been the four, average of forty-two hours a week over an eight-week cycle. And um, it shows they work one day on, two days off, one day on, four days off. So that just shows you visually how that schedule works. Um, this is the proposed organizational chart. And what you see here is highlighted on the bottom row is two new firefighter paramedics. And then um, the reason, i- in addition to this for span of control, um, we have a lieutenant's position up above. And so that would be um in the budget and that would be one of the full-timers now. That would be a promo, promote promotional process. At this point right now, we only have um, for the full-time department, we have one captain and one lieutenant. And um, in order to have um a career ladder and um like I said, span of control, um, it would be more appropriate to have two, two lieutenants. So um, right now we have sixteen call firefighters, which is kind of aligned with what we were thinking. We uh typically, we've had a two um call, I mean, sorry, twenty call firefighters, but those numbers have decreased and for various reasons. Um, first of all, two of our call firefighters became full-time firefighters. And then some other people have left due to personal reasons. So of that um sixteen call firefighters, two of them are lieutenants. One is Lieutenant Wood, who is retiring next year. And then of that group, um, one is a paramedic and the rest are all EMTs. So that's what the proposed organizational chart would look like. Um, the, the, my, uh, my whole problem with when we were talking, um, when the town administrator and the town accountant um, we're talking was the call firefighters. By this model cuts more than half of the call firefighter wages and puts them into full-time firefighter wages. And one of the things I said to um the town administrator and the town accountant was that I really felt committed to the people who have committed so much time and energy to this town. And I didn't want them to think that we were just gonna get rid of them because they're call firefighters or anything like that. The um, they're, in the old days, their main job was to come back when we needed them, when the call came in. Um, now we use them for shift fill. They're the most economical um workforce that we have. Um, they help in depth of calls. So when we have more than one call at a time. Um, and they're also, like we've already just shown, a pool for future hiring. So I really felt strongly that I didn't want to do this proposed plan. It really took me a long time to get myself to it. And um, one of the reasons I did was because I met with the call firefighters and we talked about the fact that they simply can't um, give anymore. They're giving all that they can give. And so um, they were not necessarily opposed to this plan as long as we had, still had a space for them in our department. Um, my goal is to keep as many of them as we can and keep them engaged and, and active here because the more active they are, the better employee they are and the more competent they are. So that's what we, we really want to make sure. A, a lot of departments in the area have a giant split between their full-time and their part-time departments. And we have never had that. We've been really lucky. Everybody works together really well. Um, so currently, call firefighters are, are allowed. Um, they're, oh, they have one, there's that one twelve-hour shift at night. And um, that's what they can bid on to work for shifts. They can also bid on shifts when people are out. But the main thing is there's one twelve-hour shift a night. That twelve-hour shift is also open for full-timers to bid on them. So um that, in the new model, that shift would go away because there'd be a full-time person in there. Um, under the new staffing model, what I'm proposing is to have an eight-hour shift each day during our peak time. So when it's the busiest time. And this shift would only be available to call firefighters. And again, su- subject to selective bargaining, collective bargaining. So um, so there'd still be a place for them in our, um, in our organization and they're, they're really vital to keeping the, the, the operation going, especially when we're so busy. Um, so just showing this, in the budget that you have originally, we had, we had made this, um, we had taken the the um, cost of the two fu- call firefighters, cost of the two full-time firefighters, all the call firefighter wages, and move them up. But we're also gonna ask for a- another twenty thousand to go into call firefighter wages. Um, and there's a lot of reasons for that. Um, the, the main thing is this is such an unpredictable um field. You, we just never know what's gonna happen. There's no predictability as to emergencies, natural disasters and things like that. So um, I took, by doing the proposed budget, we're taking like I said, over half the call firefighters budget away. And I wanted to have, be able to still maintain um satisfaction of the employees and the workforce and um have people responding to calls. Um, we were gonna propose to do that by using the stabilization fund and kind of changing the wording on that warrant article um, to allow us to shift some money into uh different places. But anyway, that, in further investigation, we can't do that. The uh minimum that has to go into that is twenty-five percent of the revenue. So in looking at that, what we're proposing to do is stagger the start of the two new full-time people. Um, one in July and then one in September, so that we don't need to ask for that twenty thousand dollars as well. So what we're proposing right now is without an ask of any more funds. Um, just looking at projected revenue, we still antit-, we anticipate, this is all um from the town accountant. Um, we still anticipate an increase in revenue in the general fund for fiscal twenty-five of forty thousand. And so just showing that we're gonna continue to be able to cover these positions as we move forward. And, and that's what I mean about that paradigm switch. That is, it's really a total, this is, I guess, this is what, um this is the sign of the times. This is what's having to happen all around us. And so we're um can incredibly um happy and value the call firefighters, but it's really um, they're not able to perform what we need. So um, it's really a different way of thinking. Um, this just shows our revenues and um the projected revenues, these are estimates um that, that town accountant does every month. And as you know, they, they fall into that rolling three-year average. This is just another way to show the revenue. Um, and it, it also, I think, shows the unpredictability, like it's all over the place. October is usually busier because in general, there's the fair, which um gives us more activity in all areas. But um, you can see that um years are all over the place. And that again, just shows the revenue increasing over time. Um, just, this is just grant revenue for um we are, you know, uh, you guys all know, I'm very committed to as much um funding opportunities as we can. So we've been really, uh, we've been really fortunate with grants where um, these grants um, are not all for the fire department. Great, a great, much, much of them are for the um town itself. So um, we're, we continue to do that and we're really committed to doing that. Um, what do we get from the two people that we hired this, this fiscal year for twenty-three? We got a guaranteed firefighter twenty-four hours a day. Um, we brought them in um through the contract negotiations. We brought them in thirty days early for an orientation period. So that allowed us to um train them up. They were perf- they're proficient and competent. They're able to drive and pump the trucks and uh perform all their job duties. So that was really a valuable, um valuable thing. They were able to shadow the full-time firefighters for a whole month. And we've been able to re- redistribute job duties um within the station so that people's workload is kind of shifted. And people can share the, share that workload and it, and it ends up to give um more camaraderie and team building. So that's um, that's been a really nice um benefit of it. And we have much, a much more um flexible and consistent um robust inspection program. We're following up on a lot of inspections that we kind of maybe didn't get to follow up on because of COVID. Um, you, there is uh so many, so many um businesses are kind of pivoting, switching what they're doing. And you walk into, I know they walked into a machine shop the other day and it was just, there's like a whole, all kinds of safety violations. So it, it allows us to go in, like when people are selling their houses or our inspections, allows us to go in at night and um, and provide that service to them too. Both um, both Pete and Jason have um taken the week-long class and they're tasked and become certified as child passenger safety technicians. So it, it's um, right now, all, all um, seven of us are certified to install child passenger safety seats, which you might not think is a big deal, but people come from all over um to get their child seats inspected and um installed here because we don't um ask, we don't ask people to make appointments. We're all, we've all been parents or are parents and we know that uh sometimes appointments just don't work with kids. So uh, when people drop in, if we're able to, we'll put, we'll help them with their car seat. Otherwise, we'll make an appointment with them. Um, like I, I said earlier, we have a paramedic scheduled every night, which allows, first of all, for a higher level of service for our residents, but also does allow for higher bu- uh billing potential um, based on the revenue that a paramedic level care, if appropriate, would give. So um, and in that, in that with the um, the consistency of the employees, we're having um everyone become more familiar with the workflow, with procedures, with operations, and in general, just making a safer environment. Um, and so those are all, those are all things that we've realized um really recently with the two new hires. Um, some of our future challenges is, uh, of course, that call volume continues to increase. Um, our population is aging. I don't think we need to remind anyone of that. Um, the uh, as the building inspector talked about, um, when he, um maybe that was to the finance committee, but he'll talk about new building code and stretch code, which is really um cumbersome and complicated for his department. We're also on the same end of that as far as enforcement for um fire code. Um, so that's something that's kind of up and coming for us. Um, I think um energy storage systems have become a really um significant issue for us. And as far as enforcement, so people that are having large, large stocks of battery storage in their house, um, the, the uh code has changed for that. And so we have to try to keep up with the code and the code doesn't go back in time. So people who had their stor- storage systems installed previously don't have to bring them up to the current codes. You have to keep that all straight. That's really quite a challenge too in that. Um, managing simultaneous calls. So over twenty times a month, we have two, three and four calls at the same time. And um, that's can, seems to be a continuing trend. Um, we are competing for our personnel. Um, this is a very limited work pool. And right now, um, the, the town of Salisbury, uh Raleigh and Newbury are all hiring full-time firefighters. And Salisbury's posted position is for a basic EMT and it's at a higher base rate than our captain paramedic. So we are gonna, that's what we're competing with is incredibly high um salaries in other communities. So that's why it's important, that's why I, when I go back to talking about the people and um keeping them engaged and satisfied, it's really important to do that. Um, and then still trying to manage um community education components. So like, we sign up for passion time at the school, but then we get an emergency call. So it kind of limits our ability to do that. So those are the kinds of things that we're looking for um, the future as challenges that we're gonna um have to address. Um, this is just a summary of all the people in the fire department and their years of service. You can tell that there's a lot of us in the double digits and a lot of us in gray hair, a lot, a lot of experienced, really talented people here. Um, these are just some of the incidences and um, including the poor town accountant's office with the water in it. Um, and um, we uh, this is on the, the bottom left is just our um how we receive notification of emergencies on our phones. And um, this is just some activities that we've done. And um, thank you all for your time and I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Um, I'd like to comment, uh, uh, Jen, in my opinion, nice job. Um
Thank you.
Uh, question I would ask for you and you alluded to it, but uh, you've made some pretty significant changes in the um manpower and the requirements of that manpower to live with the new program. Um, uh, I assume, and I've talked to some of these guys, but I assume that they're all on board with what you're trying to do?
Yes. Yeah, they're very happy. Um, it, for, especially the younger families, it's a quality of life issue. Um to be, the way that I, I worked here in my shift with my four children was um, four ten-hour days in a row. So you're getting up and leaving before the kids are up. And then you're like trying to smoosh in homework and all that other stuff. And um, and so this is a much, um, it's um um, it's a much, has a much more higher, uh, much higher employee satisfaction. And it is typical, it's the same schedule that most everyone around here works. So
And the core, and your core call firefighters are on board with what you're doing here?
They are. We have um, like I said, my, my biggest worry was that they would get disappointed and think that we were trying to get rid of them or something like that. But really, they're grateful because um, they want to still work in that, the eight-hour shift is a shorter shift. Um, they'll, it would be during our busier times. So they likely won't be, there won't be that third person here at night. But it's, that's another opportunity for them to, to train, to feel more comfortable, to not be uh, put on the spot as much as the second person, because now they can be the third person. Then they can um, take a learning role or a leadership role and just be supervised from um close by with somebody else. So
Cool. Um, thank you, Jen.
Um, Jen, yeah, great job. A lot of good information here and easy to read. Appreciate all you put into it. Just a, a question. You mentioned that you might need another lieutenant. Um, currently, it looks like you have two lieutenants, um Lieutenant Boyle and Hallinan. So
Boyle, sorry, Boil, yeah, Boyle's the only um, uh, full-time.
Okay. So it's on the org chart, the Topsfield Fire Department. It says Lieutenant Jonathan Hallinan.
It does? On, on where, where is that?
It's page twenty-six.
He would be so psyched for that.
You already promote him?
They would have quickly erased that.
I don't see any names on it. That's weird. I'll have to look at that. I don't see that, but
Do you have a slide twenty-six? Says Topsfield Fire Department?
Oh, oh, wait, wait, hang on. That's at the end. Hang on.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Look at that. Johnny, he, we, I better fix that before he sees it.
Okay. And then just one other question. So does this do it for you? Or do you feel you'll be coming back looking for additional people? This is just the next step?
I think this is a giant step. I think that um, it's difficult to say without um real data. So that's what we really need to do. Um, is, I, I'm, I, I can't lie and say we, we're not gonna need more help. We're probably gonna need more help. But right now, this is a quantum leap from where we've come. I mean, I, I, like I said, I start with gratitude. That's my first thing. And um we, this has been such a fight for so long and we've made such great progress. And these people are really working very hard. So this is validation for their hard work. And um, will um, I, I can't say for na- I can't say, I can't say no that I'm not gonna ask for more help, but I'm gonna say that we're gonna, we're gonna gather data for now. That's what we have to do. I mean, that's a pretty gutsy. I just maybe could consider genius, but I just cut the call force money in half. And I, 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 I really think that we need data and we need good um, job codes to go with our um payroll to be able to really tease out who's doing what.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you for your honesty.
Yes.
Chief, I'm gonna follow up on, on Lynn's comments. Um, I was, I was gonna ask you about headcount, but, but not not because I think it's wrong. I'm looking at the revenue model. And to me, the only way that the revenue model is gonna suffer, if you look at the past five years of growth, it's, it it's not gonna fall off the cliff. The only way it would suffer is if a Cataldo or a, you know, another ambulance service somehow started taking some of our business away, right? I mean, but
Um.
I don't know why that would, but it's just
Yep, there's all kinds of
My, my point is really that it feels like a safe assumption that your revenue is gonna stick.
Yeah, but things that we're providing with Atlanta Cataldo, um, their backup at this point. So the, the private ambulance companies are struggling with the exact same issues that we are. Every night, action, action ambulance, which covers Raleigh and Ipswich, send me their staffing. They're struggling with the exact same issues. So the real, the real work is gonna be that we need to work together. We have a regional ambulance um meeting. It meets once a month and we meet in Raleigh and it's public and private. I've never been involved in that before. And it, Topsfield did a uh regional ambulization, ambulance study um through M A P C. And that was just municipalities. And um, I, now that we're um, I think that we're in such a place that now we're working with the privates. And to me, that's what it's all about, is working together. So that, that, you're gonna, I think we're gonna see more of that and more reliance on each other. So our ability to give and take mutual and automatic aid is gonna really be what holds us all together, I think.
So I guess I would say as the business manager, you look at five hundred and sixty to six hundred thousand dollars a year in revenue and feel secure in that revenue for the next twenty-four months. You know, who knows beyond that, but in, in the short term, you feel good about that revenue.
I do, yeah. Yep.
Then, then terrific. Thank you.
But it, can I just ask you, if, if you look at the, it's a great chart. It, it shows from fiscal year twenty-one to twenty-two, what the increase in revenue is, and then twenty-two to twenty-three. And it looks as roughly sixty-five to seventy thousand dollars increasing in revenue. What's the salary of a firefighter? Because when you add the salary and the benefits, it looks like even though we're increasing in revenue, the costs are going to exceed whatever we bring in as an increase each year, if this continues.
Yeah, I, I think that, um, I don't know, I don't know. I think there is a point where it has to level off. Because I do think that um, there's only so much you can do. There's only so much that to, it's really, let's face it, it's two people working here. So there's only so much they can do. So I do think it will level off. Um, but in looking at that, that's what we've talked a lot about. Um what's the next step? Like what, what do we do? So, so I'll, I'll just, because you brought it up, but um Atlanta Cataldo is asking us to come sometimes to Danvers and cover and things like that. But for us, it makes much more sense. And for the patient, it makes much more sense for us to cover Boxford for them instead of going to PBD or Danvers. It's much better care. And so I think those are the kind of things that um, in order, if there were some drop-off, in order to do that, we'd have to um we would have to um, look at kind of changing the model for that.
Okay.
Are there more questions?
Well, I would Great presentation.
Yeah, I agree. Uh, Cam, um, Jen, thank you very much. I would just like to say that uh, back to Lynn's concern about whether or not we keep, continue to have to add more and more and more people all the time. And I know she's concerned about that because we discussed that a month or so ago. Uh, the fact of the matter is, uh, if, if the revenue doesn't continue to go up, if it levels off, uh, then the need for additional people, in my opinion, will decline as well. So uh, one feeds on the other. So I don't, i- if we decline in revenue, I don't know why we need to keep hiring more and more people.
But we're not talking about going beyond the eight. Like even if those revenue numbers, the number of calls keeps growing, we're still talking about staying at eight.
No, I don't think we are.
I, I don't
That's my question.
I, I think that we're gonna, we're gonna take it and see what happens. I think that we don't have, um, we need to get our um we need to get our numbers straight and get our payroll numbers straight so we can track things. So I don't have any plans right now to come, I just don't wanna lie and say that I'm never gonna come and ask or that the next person after me. But right now, I mean, if you just think about where we were four years ago, this is um, it, it's amazing. So um
But I, I thought the, the eight was based on having twenty-four-hour, two-person coverage, not based on the number of increased calls.
It is.
It, it is. It is. It just happens that the revenue offsets the um
Yeah. And that's
That's what happens. Yeah.
But if, if we were to change our drive, like the rationale for it, that's I guess what we'll have to come back to later.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that we're really good where we are right now and we need to see um, have a good data about what that is. So
I, the only reason I, I bring it up is that we were talking about that increase. It seems steady. And, and the last couple of years have been about a seventy thousand dollar increase. So the calls keep going up.
Yep.
If the calls keep going up and the calls keep coming in and we're trying to service them, then we may have to look at the approach because seventy thousand coming in doesn't cover a ninety-five thousand dollar firefighter. You know, you keep, you're gonna keep going into the hole. And at some point, you have to say, let's look at the model and see how we can do that.
Yep, exactly. Yep.
I, and I, I don't see this as any other business, in my opinion. If you own a business and trying to run it and your business continues to increase and your revenues continue to increase and you need more people to run that business, that's what you do. You go out and find those people that'll run that business. Uh, Raphael, I agree. At this point in time, she's not asking for more. We don't see any reason to go anymore. But we may have to do that somewhere down the road or we may not.
And I, and I do think that we really, at, at some point, need to look at regionalization. I mean, that's, that's really what it's about. So
Yeah, because any business, just as you said, Boyd, if you're getting more revenue, then you have to get the expenses to cover it. But every business is cash flow. If your revenue is costing you more to bring in more revenue, that's a dying business. At some point, you're gonna be going into the red.
We lose money on every sale, but we make it up on uh volume.
We don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's, no, that's not the way it's gonna work here.
But this is also the case of it, it cannot continue growing indefinitely. We're not all gonna be going to the hospital in an ambulance three times a day. Like the population is just not doubling in the last four or five years, like, like the number of calls has. So
Right.
And, and just think, just remember, that's only sixty percent of what we do. So fire prevention And, and just think, just remember, that's only sixty percent of what we do. So fire prevention and all that other stuff um accounts for a lot of work, too. And, and by having, at least having that revenue has offset the price of tho- those services, too.
Well, just remember that I'm older than all of you guys, maybe, maybe, maybe twice as old as you guys. So you gotta at least keep one firefighter or one person to be able to take care of me.
I'll be there, you know that.
All right, uh, let me just, as an aside, say that yesterday when I got a call from a uh resident from our historical commission trying to get into town hall for their meeting. Uh, and Kevin didn't answer his phone and Deb didn't answer her phone. Not, not a criticism of either of them. Thought to myself, who next do I know who might have a key to town hall? Jen Collins Brown answered the call and uh opened the doors for.
And, and guess what?
So thank you very much, chief.
Marshall, that call came into me and I was in the middle of the planning board meeting and I said, Paul Marshall.
Which typically would be fine, because I'm thirty seconds away, but I was in downtown Boston at the time.
Just, you know, no one called me.
Um, thank you very much, chief, for that.
Thank you. Yep, thank you.
All right, moving on to the water uh use uh bylaws. I know I saw Gary Crum in here someplace, but I'll start with you, uh Kevin Hartunin.
Thank you, um, Mr. Hook. We have a continuation, the conversation around the uh water use restriction bylaw. Um, the last time we spoke about it was a little while ago and there was a couple of action items involved. One, making sure KP Law had a chance to review the document. Um, two, there was a specific question about mineral, mineral rights um that was proposed as well. And there's a couple of additional tweaks that we wanted to make in the document uh before coming back to you. So um onboard docs is the, the latest version, as I understand it, um for, for conversation and for consideration. Uh, we're tentatively on the warrant I'm working on. There's a placeholder for this um uh bylaw change, if, in fact, we decide to make this change. Um, but uh Mr. Crum, our Superintendent Crum is here tonight to, to walk through any additional questions the board might have. Um, from an operational standpoint or a use standpoint, and I will just lead with that KP has confirmed that mineral rights does not apply in this case.
Did they say why? Is water not considered a mineral?
Uh, they referenced the case and said there was ju- I, I, I.
Okay, there's precedent. Okay. Thank you.
So just to recap with the law, that, what we wrote, just because it has been a little bit of time. There's, there was a conversation that happened over the summer, um questioning private wells, public wells and water use restrictions and what applies. Um, historically, uh, private wells are exempt from the restrictions that were put in place. Um, and so a lot of times on some of the businesses and homeowners, um their lawns look a lot different than other people in town and it's, it's using an, a valuable resource to, to do so. And so we took a, a closer look at the um existing bylaw and put some clarifying language, updated docu- um pieces to it. Um, and what it ultimately does is that when um, the Ipswich River falls to a certain place uh standard, and Greg's gonna correct me as I try to limp through this, but um, when it gets to a certain level, it puts in there and uh an optional water ban and pretty quickly thereafter, a mandatory water ban goes into place. Um, I think this past year it carried through September, maybe it's October. We had a very um dry summer, if we all remember. Um, and then it's lifted and people can use water without the restrictions that, that sometime, that, that are put on. For private wells, there are no restrictions currently. And so what we looked at in crafting this proposed policy was, how do we incorporate, incorporate the private wells and how do we do it appropriately? Do we bring them in completely? Do we leave them exempt? Or do we find some middle ground? And we think with this, we found something of a middle ground where um, in the event that we put a water ban in place with our users um locally, based on again, those, the water levels of the river. Private wells will be exempt until there is a official drought um from the state. And at that point, the town would then issue a drought, um, a water restriction on everybody, private and public. And ultimately, what we found is that the droughts, the official drought um can last much longer than the um, the water level um um standard that we use. And so although they come on to a, a limit, limitation on water use at this, at different times, when the town, based on the water levels uh in the river become appropriate, both would come off um, the water use restrictions at the same time. Um, Superintendent Crum, just want to make sure I said that correctly. I know it's probably in the most lame person terminology, because that's what I am.
Oh, it sounded good, Kevin.
Thank you. Uh, any, anything to follow up in, in any of that with the, with document states or early, from an operational standpoint?
Um, this is more a, a really particular thing, but um in the definitions, um Greg, I saw there's a a definition of outdoor watering and then further down in the document, there's a difference between outdoor watering at level two and total outdoor watering, level three, what's prohibited. What's total outdoor water use? There's no definition for total, so I, I didn't know.
Well, there's, basically, I think then, and there's some of the questions raised about this from KP. The outdoor bans usually apply to non-essential use, so lawn watering, things like that. So when non-essential use, basically, um, a typical water ban, people are still allowed to use handheld hoses. Um, things like that to water ornamental flowers, gardens, whatever they need to. Um, I think when you get to a total ban, you know, the, the most serious drought, even that is not allowed, so that there's no outdoor use at all, if it's, if it's not essential.
Okay, it might be worthwhile to just put the definition in there because it is a difference between level two and level three. And people might not know what total incorporates then.
Right.
If it's everything you just said, plus the essential.
Uh, the, the not, the way it's, the, the definition is the way they work, um they do need to be tweaked a bit. Because the total, the, it's written now, the total ban during the most serious drought still allows handheld use, drip irrigation systems and things like that. So there needs to be like a a third class of outdoor water use. There's, you know, you have your irrigation systems, you have your handheld drip irrigation. And then there's uh a section of, of nothing at all. Um, so it, it does need to be tweaked.
Just without, oh, sorry, go ahead.
But I think that, that the most serious drought, like the one we had this past summer, you know, that's when a, a total ban would, would go into effect. Where you, all non-essential outdoor use is essentially ceased.
What is, just out of curiosity, essential outdoor use? What is, what does that encompass?
Essential use are, are things that are needed for health and safety. Um, if it's required by permit, like say the somebody put in a septic system and it needed to establish ground cover above it. Or, you know, if you needed to um replant uh some, some wetland areas or establish ground cover to prevent erosion. And uh, anything that meets like a core function of a business. So if we had you know, a nursery that raised plants or the co-op was, was, you know, growing, you know, flowers for people to plant, that, that would be a, a core business function. They would be allowed to water those.
Okay.
Uh, Greg, um. I, 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 I worked at a golf course and I keep hearing about the fact golf courses always have uh, uh more lenient water use permit. Greg, tell me a little bit about it. Do they or don't they?
Uh, it, it depends. A lot of golf courses, um, depending on the size, actually are governed by the Water Management Act. If they withdraw more than a hundred thousand gallons per day during the summer months, so they oftentimes have their own water withdrawal permits. Um, but generally, uh golf courses are, you know, no one's gonna come play golf if you know, they're brown fields or, or, you know, patches of dirt. So that's kind of a, the core business function to maintain the turf uh in the, in the greens. Um, you know, certainly, I think it would be nice if there were some guidance on how much water they could use. But right now, it's pretty much uh, you know, untouched. There, it's essentially used. They can use it whenever, however much they want.
Wow, thank you.
Greg, uh, for, for well customers, I'm looking at, it's page three, I think, where you've got A, B, C, D, E, and F, and it gets, it, it goes from a shortage of water down to level three. So if, if the twenty percent of people in town who own wells, they are impacted at E, level two significant drought? Or they impacted at Ipswich River, stream flow is very low?
Well, I think that's, that's uh right, right now, they would be only impacted when there's a drought. Um, historically.
It'd be E, right?
Draw, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt. So does that mean it would be E, a level two significant drought, state of drought? That's where they would be im- impacted?
The way, the way this is currently written, yes.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
So I think, you know, one of the one of the, one of the questions I have is, is, you know, this is kind of the middle ground, as Kevin was saying. Is it the board's, you know, opinion that it should be more, you know, apply universally across the different water simply, you know, drought, or I mean, a public customer as well users? Um, or does, is, do you think this is appropriate or some other form of this? Is, is there a consensus?
Well, Greg, could I get back to, just to, for anyone listening and to make sure I understand, the people who have wells and the area around the Ipswich River where we get our water, um, that, that would be eighty percent of the town, they all draw from the same basin, pool, et cetera, right?
Correct.
Okay. And so the Ipswich River flow is impacted by that surrounding area and how much flows into the river?
It's likely not a one for one thing. Um, depending on where they are, how deep their well is, what type of well it is, you know, could have a significant lag on when the actual effect is felt in the upper, like they have a very deep rock well. It may be a while before that, of, that withdrawal is felt in the upper levels of the, of the aquifer. Um, for places like us, we have a shallow, the town's wells are pretty shallow, they're only like thirty-five feet deep. They're alongside a tributary to the Ipswich River. We take out of, of, obviously, the largest withdrawal in town. So our effects are the, the timeframe that they occur is a lot, tends to be a lot shorter and um more dramatic than, than a typical well owner.
So are we accomplishing much by including wells in this policy? Or does it just make people feel good that we're all treated equal?
Well, I think it's, it's um I think it accomplishes something where they're following the same rules during the most severe droughts. And there's really, there's really three classes of, of consumer, water consumers in town. There's the people that rely on exclusively the town's system. And then there's people that rely strictly on private wells. I grew up on a well. Um, if it's your only source of water, you tend to be very conservative on how you use it. Um, but there's a group in the, in the middle where they use our water for domestic purposes and they have an irrigation well to water their grass. And that's really, I think, the ones where um those could, could easily get abused because there's no downside. If the, the well goes dry, it goes dry, but they're still gonna have water in the cows.
Well, can they be classified as water users if they use any of the town water?
You can, if you, I, I, you could change the definition. So if you have town water on the property, then you're considered a a, a, a water customer, whether or not you have a well in, for irrigation or not.
And that would address that, that group. Um, because probably the, the people, as you said, were solely on a well, are very conscious and they're not out watering their, their lawn to keep it green if they could potentially not be able to flush toilets or take showers.
Unless they're, they're lucky to have a very high capacity well. But even, even with the um, they're the most severe drought, I think you could argue that even they need to follow the um, the regu- the, the rules or the, the requirements during the most, the driest of times.
And I think that's a very re- I'm sorry to interrupt. I, I was just gonna agree with you. I, I think it's a very, you know, obvious solution and it is a good sense of community for everybody to be treated the same in a drought. I don't think they should be any different. My concern would be, is there any precedent for a realtor sold them a house and part of the pitch was, you have a standalone well, so whatever happens in the town, you know, around drought time, won't impact you. Um, I, I, I don't know that that would be the case. I don't know anything about real estate sales. Um, Lynn, actually, I think you might know something about it, but would, would, would anyone have something to say to us like, hey, hold on a sec here. You know, I bought this house in this town because it had a well. And, and, and to me, that's worst case scenario. I'm just wondering if that's a possibility.
Greg, I'll take this one, sorry with you. So um, way back when in my earlier career, I was in real estate and um Arizona Misfire Insurance is typically what would fall in this place. So a realtor misrepresents the property. There's no obligation on the town, other than maybe an angry phone call and an explanation of what, that they got bad information. Any liability would be um on a misrepresentation by that realtor who sold that house, um, from a legal standpoint.
And on, on a similar vein, um irrigation systems, in fact, hundreds of them were installed in town that predate these regulations. These only came into effect in like I think two thousand and six. Um, back at the, in the, in the nineties, there were times when we were pumping a billion gallons a day during the month of July. We could barely keep up. Um, since these went into effect, um, that's been cut in half. Um, we've actually seen people do more watering in the spring, cut back in the summer and, and the watering goes up in the fall compared to what, what used to be, trying to, to prepare the lawn for what's coming and then trying to revive it after the, after the warm summer.
Right. I, it, it seems like you and Kevin have struck a good, you know, sort of middle ground here, you know, for both town water, town and well usage. To me, it's, it seems like a reasonable approach. And, and, and I, I support it. It makes sense to me.
Greg, can I just ask you? I know this came up in, in front of town meeting before. Um, what was the discussion then? How did people feel? Because at one point, the wells were regulated when we were under a permit, so there must have been some discussion.
Correct. And DEP at the time, they, they said you could um and you get a choice, either was it gonna be a total ban for all water customers during low stream flows? Or you can have handheld watering, um, but apply it to everybody, including private wells. So it was kind of a, almost like a, a poison pill. You had, they're, they're basically two, but most people, I think, would consider bad choices. Um, so being only twenty percent of the town, there was a lively discussion at town meeting about, you know, private wells and property rights and things like that. And then when it came up time for the vote, the private well users were just voted.
Okay.
All right. Any other uh questions, thoughts at this point?
Overall, yeah. I just have uh one more comment. Um, this document, the way it is now, um when it was reviewed, they accepted all of our changes. So these changes that are highlighted in this document are changes they made to our draft. So at some point, I'm gonna have to go through this and create a draft that shows the changes that Kevin and I originally made. And then on top of that, uh KP's changes. Uh, because this only reflects KP's changes that they made to the, to the draft version. But uh, and when I do that, I'll incorporate the um, what we were talking about, about people that have both private, a private irrigation well and town water on the property, that they'll be considered as a a water customer for intense, all intents and purposes.
And just some clarification on those definitions, Greg?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. So, uh, if, if I could just ask the board, for where we are process-wise with the warrant, obviously, that we're working on, um generally, what I'm hearing is the board's comfortable with the, the, the direction we're heading, less any fine tuning of definitions or, or specific language within it, but conceptually, there's support for that.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm, yeah, we may not be there yet, but we, we're headed in the right direction. And uh, so I'm in support of where we're gonna go from here. And so I'm in support of where we're gonna go from here. Uh, because we've all got to reserve water, whether you have a well or whether you don't.
So we'll make those those last modifications that we talked about. Uh, Greg will take, we'll make, I don't know, we'll have to unravel that, but. Have that original bylaw with all of the changes so that it can be presented, um, appropriately, and we'll we'll continue to move forward as a article in the warrant.
And that that next meeting, I think probably we won't need much discussion at all. If we have any comments on the document, we can. Probably just forward those to you, but it seems like content wise, we're kind of there. Just feed things along.
Sounds great. I mean, I think the other piece to it will be the communication, keep, you know, we always want to make sure we're communicative. With the private well, um, homeowners and businesses, right? I mean, once we have that, the leading into town meeting and. We'll have to maybe come up with a strategy, activate the language of the place to to. You know, if it's a public, public meeting or something like that, open house type of situation where we bring people in or send a notification out. But Greg and I can work through that too, just so we have the the communication part, um, locked in.
That's a great idea, Kevin. Yeah.
Yeah, I was thinking about sending out, having, um, you know, postcards or some other document preprinted that we could mail out at the time when a water ban goes into effect. Um, just because it is a change and we can send it to everybody affected. Um, or every mailing address on the zip code or something like that, so that everyone gets it directly from us.
So prior, prior to town meeting, could we? Put out some kind of word and give a link to people to to be able to read this? I don't know. Does this go out, Kevin, with the, um? Notification of the articles, et cetera? Do they get the full verbiage here? In the document at home?
Yeah, it depends. They've done it different ways since I've been here. Sometimes, depending on the length of the of the language, they'll embed it right into the document. And then I think that, like when we did the codification, it was a reference, it was a link that we put for people to go to. So. I'll follow probably K P's recommendation from, you know, leaning on the side of as as much as we could push into that warrant without it becoming overly cumbersome. We'd want to do that, um, just so people can see it there right in front of them at town meeting and and leading into it. Um. But yeah, we'll we'll make sure, I'll talk with Matt about the best approach of how we kind of. And then we'll we'll also talk about, I mean, we'll send the notification ahead of next, you know, in the spring or summer next year, but I'm also thinking maybe. Try to find ways to push it through our social media on the websites and let people know that, you know, this is something that that's coming. Um, and that people have a chance to weigh in on a town meeting as well.
And typically, this, uh, these things don't, wouldn't probably go into effect until, um, the summer of twenty twenty four. Is it the, they would still have to go to the Attorney General's office and be signed off on, so that may take, you know, most of the summer for that to happen.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
All right, up next, the public property naming policy up for review, uh, again.
Um, so. Thank you all who contributed, um, feedback at the last meeting and subsequently, um. Uh, this morning in my, in our office, um, compiled that what we received. Um, put it into one, uh, document. And so. For tonight's purposes. Wanted to allow the the board a chance to to discuss and, um, hopefully, if we can. Get to a comfort level with with the naming policy tonight, and we would look to bring this forward in a regular meeting. Uh, because it is something new, it's a policy, and I think it's more appropriate in a in a regular select board meeting, but. Hopefully, we can get through a lot of it tonight. And if, and so with that said, I don't know if everyone's actually has to review it, if there's any questions or concerns or thoughts or comments.
Yeah, after our last.
No, no one has any comments.
Well, somebody go.
All right, I'll I'll jump in. And I'll say, like, the section one, um, the one where the most conversation was about who could qualify i- in order to be named, um. I like the idea of the undisputed ties to the town, because that addresses, you know, both someone who's a resident and someone who's contributed. Um, but then after that, I think we're kind of saying way too many words here. The way it reads right now. As long as you have ties to the town, you can A, have served the town in some significant way, which means you're not a resident. Or B, you could be a resident and you have to die. In the war. So I I don't see, you know, it seems a little odd to me that you have to die if you're a resident, but you could have just contributed in some way if you're not a resident. Um, and and then C.
I don't read it that way.
Yeah, I don't either. The first bullet point. That's off of that. You don't have to be dead for the first bullet bullet point.
Right, so you, if you're not a resident.
No, B, B, bullet point one. Contributed in a significant way to public life, dot, dot, dot.
And it doesn't say or, it says the second bullet point is have died in the line of duty. It's not an or.
Uh, so, yeah. Put an or at the end of nation.
Yeah.
Comma, or.
I I'm not sure we need A, B, and C if the first one says you have to have ties to the town. That makes you a resident or a non-resident. And then the the point of A, B, and C all is that you contributed to the town in a significant way. Um. Or to the Commonwealth or nation. I mean, we just say it three different ways.
No, no, because B, that first bullet point again, is somebody who's got an undisputed tie to the town.
Mm hmm.
Is a resident and maybe or or was a resident. Grew up here, moved away to Selma, Alabama, and did something fantastic for the country down there. I, I.
And you have to die?
No.
No, no.
No.
Nope. That's where we got the firefighter and and police fighter, you know, policeman in, uh, you know, section B, bullet point one to to Raphael's description right there. And then we make the end of Commonwealth or nation, semicolon, or have died in the next bullet.
Okay.
Yeah, so that'll that'll correct. You're right. It is. It is a little bit exhaustive, given that all we're saying is make sure you you have a tie to the town. But at the same time, it might protect. I don't know.
Okay, the or, I like the or.
Something named after themselves, but.
Yeah, I know. Do we need C? Who does C C pertain to that A and B don't?
Is that new? I don't remember seeing that, but.
We don't need, I don't think we do need that.
Oh.
Yeah, I think that's repetitive.
I concur.
So I'm okay with the or in taking out C. I think that says what we were trying to get at.
Yeah, I'm good on that. Marshall, you good on that?
I am.
Me too.
Admittedly, I have never had as strong feelings about the exact wording of this policy in that. Two things remain true. This person needs to be sponsored by someone on the select board. So in theory.
Yeah.
That someone will do a lot of this vetting themselves, and B, it's still subject to vote.
It is, but I think it's important that the select board agree. What are the requirements to even bring it before the board?
To be clear, I'm not arguing with you all. I'm just basically letting you all argue it out. I'm not saying you shouldn't be arguing it, is what I'm saying. I'm just not going to. Uh, invest.
Yeah, so let's, all right, so let's, let's, Boyd, if you agree, let's kill C, put an or after bullet point, you know, bullet point one and B, and then I think we gotta, we're good on. Number one, right? Section one?
Bingo.
Okay. So, you know. The other one was the donation that we had, we talked about last time, and it's it's struck.
Flashed out of here.
It struck, so that's a bingo to me.
I mean, to be clear, people can still make a donation if they want to. It's just not tied.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, was there anything else?
I don't think so.
Nope.
Okay. About it, I think. All right, Kevin, I think you've got yourself a final version to work up for approval. Raphael, back to donations. It all depends on how big they are.
And in what denomination or what, uh? Not denomination.
Written out to?
All right, with, uh, unless anyone has anything else, I'm happy that we'll be able to give a final version of this for approval at a future meeting.
Fantastic.
We can do that.
Cool.
Do we need to, or can we just vote on it now with those two, you know?
I'm inclined, whenever it's not time. Vital to not vote on things in work sessions. I try to honor what I've been told is the tradition and.
Absolutely. I forgot we were in a work session. Yep.
It all blends together, doesn't it?
It does.
Which is kind of the thing, like Boyd and I had this talk, and I've heard it said over and over again. Mr. Gant used to say it. A lot to us as well, that, you know, the work session in its original conception was to focus on one or two things, and we've got, uh, like an eleven.
Thirteen.
Thirteen point agenda here, so, uh, we're already kind of not flying in the field concept of a work session, but I'll do my best to keep us there as much as I can. I didn't realize you listened to me. Thank you. Occasionally, not all the time, Boyd. Yes, Kevin.
I'm sorry to delay, but we removed very quickly and efficiently through this one, but I just have one. I wanted to make sure we're all crystal clear, because this this was, the genesis of this came from the, um. George Patton, uh, who ever physically lived in town. Um, but on the other side of where the bridge that leads into where he.
Yeah.
I'm reading this now and, um. I'm just wondering if if the the language now is prohibitive for this particular, it might not matter. But in this instance, I will have to go back, and I just want to make sure we're all on the same page that this. Does anybody read this? The way I read it, that he probably would not be eligible for the naming rights of the bridge.
Yeah.
Under the circumstances of being.
And and I think honestly, I know Lynn was about to say something, but I think honestly, this whole conversation came out of. The basic question of why would we Topsfield name a bridge after somebody who has no real strong connection to the town? And then we said, well, we don't really have a policy around this, so we should do it. What you're pointing out is, I think, true. We may have now created a policy inspired by this request that ultimately. Fundamentally denies this request, but. I think that's fine if that's where we end.
Well, what's important to me is that we said from the get go, as we're separating. The need for these guidelines from this request, and that's what I think we have successfully done. I've tried to keep my blinders on. Forget about that request until we finish this.
Yeah, which is what I'm saying. It may ultimately be that. What we've created here would fundamentally deny that request. To be clear, I'm not saying we're denying that request, because it's not mine to say. But if that's what you're highlighting, Kevin, yes, it may very well end up that way.
That's an awkward conversation to have, Kevin.
That's okay. I don't, I can have, I have them on a daily basis. Um. What, with regards to, you gave this example, Miss McDonald, the last meeting when we discussed this. Um, as I read it again, is there, like, if somebody like Martin Luther King Jr., you referenced him, I think, at the last meeting, Miss McDonald. As this reads now. Would that be something that would be eligible or not?
No.
He was born or raised here.
Yeah.
He had a child to child stuff.
You know, and nothing against Martin Luther King, but just reading this, it that's the first thing. It has to have a close tie to the town.
I think it's different when you're, when you're Boston, and you have, you can just name things forever, almost literally. We don't have that many things to name, so we really need to focus in our naming policy. Which ultimately to Martin Luther King or George S. Patton Jr. or whoever. It may be that may come before us at some point and may not succeed in having something named after is not a sign of disrespect to. Those people, it's just a acknowledgement of the scarcity of nameable things that we have in a town of this size and character.
And, you know, honestly.
Said, perfectly well said.
Just to be honest, too, I mean, people who are have great, um, national, um, exposure, et cetera, have many opportunities to have things named after them. People who are from Topsfield don't really have that opportunity, you know, so, um, but I like the idea that it's focused on this town with people who maybe nobody knows. Who made a a real contribution to our town.
Yeah, and I like, I hadn't, it occurred to me the way you just put that, Lynn, but this does open up the possibility that we. Discover, basically, somebody that most people around here didn't know existed or didn't know did anything, and. We bring that person back into the modern day by naming something after them. Somebody who never would have been discovered in any other town but a house.
Right.
So I I will probably just write. Now, we will make those modifications. We'll bring this probably to the next meeting at the end of the month. Um, just for a way of operations to turn the page, because they they did come, they decided to come to us through the the Veterans, uh. American Legion post here in Topsfield. Um, I will talk with Dick Collin in and then probably attend the future meeting to kind of explain the policy, just because it's kind of an open ended thing. They they did send that letter of support. Um, and I'll just let them know that the policy, you know. Is what it is, and, um. You know, I just. Eyes wide open. I just wanted to mention that, because it it was one of my action items, once we got through this with. That group that I would circle back with them and and get confirmation, so, um. Yeah, I just wanted to be, there's a next step coming out of this meeting, once it's passed on. Two Mondays from next Monday, um. I'll I'll make sure I have a conversation with the with the V S L.
And and logistically, my understanding is this is a policy, this is not going to warrant, this is not voted on. So if somebody really has strong feelings that we've affronted somebody, they're always welcome to come and lobby the select board to make what they consider a required change, correct?
Well, and, yes, and and given, you know, anyone's allowed, you know, if if. I I don't want to keep referring to the the existing case, so to speak, but if a similar one came forward and someone felt strongly about it, they are more than. Welcome to avail themselves of the process. They're welcome to get in touch with the one of the five of us and and make the case to that person and and go through the process. But we now have a policy which we did not have before, or we will on the twenty seventh theoretically.
Yeah, because I would recommend that we vote on it, uh, for two reasons. One, to show that we're all in agreement, and two, to let people know, to make it very public, that there is such a policy.
Yep.
It's it's great to have this, and not, a lot of communities haven't taken this step by now. We did a little research, um, and it's really important to have the thoughtful conversation, because. I've had two communities reach out to me in the last three years, asking if we had a policy, and they've shown that, say no, so we're actually kind of a little bit on the forefront, which is great.
All right. Absolutely. It's always on the forefront.
And just so you know, Kevin, you do qualify it under undisputed ties as well.
Uh, can I get a new recharge named after?
Is it a working one or a broken one?
The broken one.
No, but you can definitely get a solar bench named after.
I'll take a rock. Just give me a rock.
All right, the next item up on the agenda, Mr. Gary Wilds is here, uh, to, uh, talk with the us about something.
Good evening. I want to apologize after hearing, uh, Marshall's dismay over the length of some of these working sessions now. I feel a little guilty, but some of this is time sensitive. I know on the board docs, I believe Sam had put up. If you could bring, uh, your attention to the notice of award, I know many of you are aware. Uh, a little under a year ago, we received a four hundred thousand dollar grant for a roadway safety improvement. Um, grant through the Department of Housing and Community Development. In that time, we've finally successfully gotten our IFB out. And there has been an apparent low bidder, but in that time, unfortunately. As we all know, everything has gone up and costed more. So we found ourselves in a budget shortfall to complete the project. Um, and what was granted and what was needed to complete the project now didn't suffice. So until late this afternoon, I was still struggling with where we were going to come up with the remaining fifty two thousand eight hundred. Um, I did get a late call. I've been to go, I probably negotiating is the wrong word, begging the Department of Housing and Community Development. To help us in this regard, because our our current funds. Are technically tied up. I have them, but I'm trying not to divert them for other roadway projects that desperately need to get done without diverting our own funds. So in that regard, I got a lady email this afternoon that they had considered the, uh. Proposal that I'd sent to them. And that I would have definite word tomorrow on the exact amount. I believe it's going to be the minimum. Or at least the minimum, I'm hoping more, but the fifty two eight, so we can go ahead. And put out the notice of the award. The short notice of this. Trying to get this out is, I guess, more of an approval to if that funding is there and in in line, is to get this award out. So the vendor can be let know that they can go ahead and start purchasing their stock. One of the toughest things right now to get is granite. There's going to be a great deal of this, uh, put in on the two intersections that we're going to improve, uh, much like the Complete Streets project. With elevating our sidewalks and making them a safer, um, area to be on. Uh, it gives them the opportunity. I will come back to you on the twenty seventh of this month. With the contract to be signed, that'll have been signed. With the contract to be signed, that'll have been signed by the vendor first. And then bring that to your attention for approval at that time. This is more, I guess, is to say. As long as I get that email tomorrow for the exact funding and have that sorted out, if I can. Get this put out, excuse, I apologize my voice. Um. Get this put out so we can start the process. We've got a lot coming this year between all the paving we're going to do, the reconstruction and our cemetery. The sooner I can get this one done. And off my plate, the better and I maybe I'll. Sleep a little better. I'm already losing sleep over this stuff already with what's coming this year. Um, so I guess I'm not sure if it's an appropriate. Use of this tonight, and I don't know if it's necessarily a vote needs to be taken. More of a please go ahead with this award. Once you know for a fact, I've spoken with Catherine Gabriel in regards to this. We do technically have the funding. In place. I could actually go ahead and put the notice of award out. Uh, I just, I, I would feel much better once we get it from the state to go ahead. And then do that then. So it's basically just to get your approval. If you're comfortable with this, to put the notice of award out to the apparent lowest bidder.
Gary, I have to say, I, because it came in late, I honestly have not looked at anything. So. But I trust you though. So just at a high level, this is the lowest bid that you're going to go with. And if the letter comes in tomorrow, you're fully covered between the grant and what. The housing authority or uh, community development, whatever is going to give you. So there's no additional uh, financial request, right?
That is correct. Yeah. So the, the lowest bid, Allied Paving was the lowest of the three. Um, it was the apparent low, so they would be the ones awarded. It's based off of the base bid. We put this in three parts. The base bid requirement and then two add alts. Everything came in so expensive for these things right now, um, that were basically boiled down to doing the base bid. So this is the three thirty five, eight ninety nine, eighty. That would be uh, roughly in that ballpark to finish that. We have an engineering firm on that has helped us with this T E C. And with their fees as well, we've, and then of course. The ten percent higher for everything um, is where we the shortfall came in. So this additional money from the state will cover us to do the base bid. And then anything we want to do in the future when money frees up. If there's some paving we need to do at these intersections, we would take care of in the future. That was kind of the skin of the game that we had. To have to try to work with the state to see if they will put this money up.
And this gives us sidewalks at that Washington intersection?
It would. It will give us uh, sidewalks at the Washington and Boxer Road. We're also going to take the island out there. Narrow up the intersection, less pavement, less speed and move the crosswalk there. And you've gone out that way towards Masco. That long crosswalk that goes diagonals is a very difficult.
Yep.
One to get across. Um, so that has also been taken into account and moved as well. The other is the Washington Colrain. Same situation, that long si- uh, crosswalk there goes to nowhere. We cross them to a dirt. Path and it doesn't have a sidewalk to go anywhere. So that will also be continued down Grove Street. Behind what I know as Sugarloaf, the Rock. There and cross over onto Grove Street where we currently have raised, uh, excuse me, the elevated sidewalks. That was part of our complete streets grant that we got three years ago, I think. It'll be all very, very nice tie in. And will help improve safety aspects at both these intersections.
And if you sign this contract, when does this take place, Gary?
Uh, I'm hoping if the weather holds and the long term is still there, I'd love to think. I might be able to get this contractor in sometime mid to late March.
Okay.
And I just want to make sure because this is obviously a money thing that. We don't have to vote on this and Catherine is good with what we're doing here.
So, so the, in the future meeting, once the contract, once the letter of award goes out, order of operations, letter of award that will go out. Um, subsequently, a contract will be uh, prepared. We'll in the interim fi- confirm that we have the month of funding for the. A remaining piece of the, of the project and um. Come back to the board, hopefully on the. End of the month at the last regular meeting with the contract to be uh, executed.
Gary, I'm totally comfortable with the idea. This has all been funded by one method or another, and I understand the timing, so.
And I apologize for this timing. Um, one of the things I'm struggling with when we realize the shortfall is trying to get this funding. It came in late today, which we think is going to be a very good thing. And with that, all these companies are already starting to fill their whiteboards up with their spring projects. So. There is my angst in trying to kind of move this along, not normally something I would like to do or. No, probably the wrong phrase, force on any of you. Uh, it's just kind of that time constraint. I'm trying to get around as I work through this.
I mean, I understand.
You've been told the funding is coming in.
I'm sorry, I.
Well, I just want to clarify before we say that, Marshall, you, you were told that you're going to get noticed tomorrow that funding is coming in. At least of fifty two thousand dollars. So you, if, if we say, yeah, go ahead, notify. You know that money is coming. Waiting another day is. Feels a little more prudent to me, but if you're comfortable, the money's coming, I trust you too.
I will read you verbatim the, from the Department of Housing and Community Development email. Uh, to my response to checking today because I had emailed them earlier in the week. And I was getting a little desperate, so they did get back to me from Philippe. Hi Gary, thanks for checking in from a pragmatics perspective. We have approved your request. We just need to finish verifying with our fiscal team and you should hear back from me by tomorrow. Best, Philippe.
Oh. Verify from our fiscal team though is. It gives me a little bit of pause.
Well, and again, this is where we're, we're under no obligation. Um, I.
Okay.
Before.
If we keep it on the whiteboard.
If you, if you say it and then we don't get that money, then. You know, we, we haven't signed the contract, right?
No, but I, I do have it elsewhere. So I have another bucket. Again, this is, it's, I'm trying not to take up much of your time, I swear. I have a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars elsewhere from the Winter Roadway Recovery Act funding. The which we got a hundred and sixty five thousand this past year that Governor Baker signed. Occasionally, the governors. Have extras at the end and they throw these out every once in a while. We got it this past year and it was a godsend. Forty, almost fifty thousand of that was used for line painting. We currently have a hundred and seventeen thousand of that. That is unspent at this time, but has to be spent by June thirtieth. I have it to be used elsewhere currently on my paving plan and infrastructure plan. I can pivot that. It's not pre-approved at any designation. It is there. I'm just, what, we have it. Basically, if I have to pull it, something comes off my paving plan for the year to cover these costs. So whatever the D H C does give us, if I have to move some or none at all, basically is what that boils down to. I.
Okay.
So you're covered. Either way, you're covered.
Yeah, you're covered. That, that was.
Doing something else.
Yeah.
So it, it does in my mind become an either or if the money does not come in.
Well, temporarily, temporarily.
Yeah, temporarily. I, potentially it would be phone calls I may or may not have to field from residents or things. It's always a fluid situation. One of the things we're fighting against now is. Everything does cost so much. We're not in our, our. Funding from the state's been going down the last three years due to the formula they use. And everything's costing more. So we're, we're starting to lose the battle going forward on how far we can get and can we keep up with our roadways? To that end, I'm trying desperately to think of anything I can do outside the box to make that happen. And where I have these funds earmarked right now is to try and stay on track, but.
Yep.
That's your best laid plans that don't often fall into place.
And Gary, if you don't go forward, you're going to lose that four hundred thousand that we have.
We're going, yeah, we're going one way or the other. We're not giving that money back.
That was the point I was going to make is that in. We will push something off a year to ensure that we have the four hundred thousand dollars that is money from the state available to improve these very dangerous intersections, so.
Well, um.
All right.
You, you guys will correct me if I'm wrong and I'm sure you will, but even we vote on it tonight, we don't have to spend the money.
Yeah. But I, I think, I think the general sense of the board is we're good with you uh, sending out that email.
Thank you. I appreciate the vote of confidence. I just wasn't sure on this. If it even of really a formal vote on the notice to award or not, or how that would go with this. With this board. So it was really a, a kind of a fact finding on how this should go.
Sounds like.
I mean, I don't think, I, I think what we vote on is the actual contract, so.
Yes.
Yep.
Yep. Send the email.
Thank you, Gary, for pursuing that other grant and doing all that legwork.
I was jumping, scared, I scared the girls this afternoon in the office when I yelled when the email came in that they were. Giving us the money, so.
That's great.
Just one last question, Gary. You said it's a four hundred thousand dollar grant. There's three twenty five remaining. So what? What does seventy five go to?
Uh, to engineering, design and yeah, this admin, some of that's contingency for construction admin, um, site design and all those.
No, no, no. I was saying on the revenue side, it says R S T grant remaining is three twenty five. So we've already spent seventy five of the four hundred thousand.
Committed.
Yeah, committed, not spent yet, but committed.
It's going to be used for other things.
Not here.
Yeah, so yeah, that was kind of a. It was a way to show the state why we were looking for that money and it's an actual real, we'll be realized costs when we get down a brass tacks at the end of it.
And is there, is the contingency ever not drawn upon?
It, yes, sometimes.
Complete streets, right? Yes. When we did the complete treats over in Grove, that actually we had some. Extra funds that allowed us to do a little bit additional sidewalk, sidewalk, I believe it was.
It was, yes. Can, you're right, Raphael, and it's a thought of mine. Uh, one of the other part is construction admin. We could try to minimize that. That part there is a engineer on site each day they're working. I don't know. This is not a huge project and it's not even half of what the complete streets was. I don't think we need an engineer every single day, so I'm going to have that conversation with T E C. It just, it helps in keeping myself or Travis free from doing the things that we have to do and not be on site. Making sure nobody's cutting short, you know, making shortcuts.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Your email away, my friend.
Hey, thanks, Gary.
Thank you very much. Sorry for the type, sorry for the late barge in. I, I went rushing in their offices. Trying to get on this. I appreciate it, everybody. Thank you very much.
If I had just ten seconds. Mr. Wells, thank you because we met a few weeks ago when these numbers came in and we were off the mark. And it's not by any miracle that this money arrived or that we're going to be able to fund this project. It was blood, sweat and tears, but. Our highway su- highway parking cemetery superintendent who made it all happen. So um, I know he's modest. He wouldn't say it, so I will. Um. He did amazing work ensuring that we get this project over the finish line.
Well, thank you very much. I'm glad we could get that and I, I, Raphael, I've got my fingers crossed. We're getting the money tomorrow. I'm telling you.
I, I am ninety percent sure of it.
Knock on wood.
I've got a good feeling.
Yeah, shoot us all an email when it comes in. We'll go buy a cup of coffee.
You'll just hear, you're in Tops.
I just want to see a picture of Gary all excited. I don't need an email. This is a big.
You might, yeah, you might see me out near Route One, jumping up and down. Thank you all.
Thanks, Gary.
Good night, Gary.
All right. Now, I know the agenda shows us going into executive session, but one item that we were going to handle in the executive session, we're now going to handle in. Open session. So with that, I turn uh, to Kevin.
So thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've been working. Incredibly hard over the last almost full year on looking at our H R policies, um, which we refer to many times as the H R bylaw, which is our policies and procedures. Rules and regulations. Um. What happens is that the, the by the by law that was created, the select board. Promulgates uh, these rules, policies and regulations around H R. Last time it was done in, was in late June of two thousand eighteen. Uh, when I first started, um, a lot of people, when I were doing my first interview with the department heads identified some issues, but they. Had identified in the policies. Um, I've, from the day I've been here, I've noticed things that. I think we and I know we can do better, uh. Both for the town and both, and, and more importantly for our team. Um, without, without overburdening from a financial standpoint. And we put together a group of, of people uh, made up of, of employees. Um, department level staff as well as employees who are not um. On the personal bylaws, but are in contract, on a contract. I had two members who, who serve on the personnel um. Committee for the town and actually were involved with the two thousand eighteen version. Um, really solid group of people who've dedicated. Incredible amount of hours into reviewing. Our policies in great detail. Their review came after um. The interim town administrator, Robin, um. Worked with U Mass um. Collin Center and they took a look at the bylaws, did sort of a high level, what do we need to consider, identified, highlighted the areas. And then this group really dug deep into that and the rest of the document. Um, the last month and a half, I've been now meeting with them. I stayed. Completely away from their meetings very purposefully because I wanted to be organic. I wanted to come from the team. And not have any influence from my perspective on what I think might be better, what we could do to improve the policies. Um. Last week, after a number of hours and days of meeting with the crew and team. Um, we landed on generally the highlights of what that, the changes that we're going to eventually be proposing. Um, to the board will look like. Um. This is an informal step in the process. There is by the by law, formal steps where the personal director creates any changes. Like creates the policy or creates any changes to that policy, which can come from the select board, two members of the staff. Um, or a board or committee. Um, or myself, and in this case, it's kind of a combination of most of that. Um, and. After that, um. The informal step is I'm going to just give you a high level update that what we've been working on the second. Piece, the, the real second step then is to hold a public, uh, public meeting on it, a posted meeting. And then after that, take it, any modifications to the document to the select board for review. And then uh, for votes on the changes that are being can, um, being proposed. And then ultimately what the, if it's voted through, the final product looks like, well, a copy will be distributed to every employee for signature and acknowledgement that they've seen and read it. So that's the process. That's sort of what we've been up to. Um, what, some of the highlights that I wanted to talk about tonight. Um. And we've talked about some of this, but one of the things is the initial creation of the grid and step compensation plan. Um. That was created years, 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 years ago because there was a salary survey that showed that tops of employers were being paid uh, less than market. Um, members on, on the committee who were there when this took place verified that, explained the thought process. The idea though was it would never live in perpetuity. At some point that, that grid, if you're growing with a staff comparatively to other communities or just getting colas. You get to market and eventually surpass market if you don't do another salary survey to see how you're doing. And so we did a salary survey that commenced in Jan-, uh, July, um, which concluded, which we've talked, we've spoken about. Um, and we made a market adjustments for uh. January first and we'll be making uh, additional market adjustments for some employees uh, July, July first in the new fiscal year. Um. And going forward, we're going to have the range versus the, the grid so that it'll be a cola associated with it as we move through it. And then we're also expecting to put money in the salary reserve for merit pay, which would not happen this. This year, but won't, will happen in about eighteen months from now, a little less than that, about sixteen months from now. Um, at the end of the fiscal twenty four year. Um. So that was the compensation um, piece of it. The H R policies themselves. Couple of things that are, that have, five highlights, I guess, at this point is longevity. We looked at the longevity. Of fifteen communities and I believe either eleven or thirteen, apologies, I don't have the exact number. Had a five year longevity um, for people. We start at ten. Um, our ten, fifteen and twenty, six fifty, seven fifty and a thousand dollars respectively in each of those three. Levels um, are generally market. Um, but what the, the group is going to be proposing is a five year uh, longevity payment. Um, to be added into the, into the um, personnel bylaw. Um, that is also consistent with all of the other unions uh, who are eligible for longevity as well, a five year step. Um, vacation, that's a, that's always been a very big one for me. We're very, we have a very. Prescriptive vacation plan here in Topsfield. Um, the way it works is you come on, you get, you have no vacation. You accrue it, but you can't use it until six months. You get one week and after a year you get another six weeks. I'm sorry, another, another week. So you get two weeks, you get ten days your first year and that lasts for a few years until you reach the next plateau. Um. What we're going to be looking at doing is what, what we've seen a lot of communities do, which is give an upfront. Uh, week of vacation uh, for people to use when they start. Um, and then. Accrue vacation over a period, over a period of time um, to build that up and hopefully. Accrue vacation over a period, over a period of time, um, to build that up and hopefully if we can get it right, allow people to use that vacation time. Um, as they accrue versus having to wait for their anniversary date when there's sort of this big dump of time. What this will do, if we can get this figured out, will prevent. Um, it could prevent bigger, um, payouts, end of career for, for vacation time. Um, because with the dump, and then you start accruing when people retire like eleven months in and right before their anniversary date, they get paid, and they don't use vacation. Get paid on that first dump of their full amount and the amount that they accrue. So those end of career payouts become sometimes very large. Um, but the benefit is that people are able to use it in real time, which, which is good for, for staff and that they'll be. Able to more quickly build some of that time up, um, allowing them to have more work-life balance, which I think is something we're really trying, trying to strive for. In what that group's been working on.
Can I ask you, just as we go through this, just while the thoughts are fresh in my mind, um. Do we need a system to track this? This seems kind of complex. Um, we, we start with five and then you go to a point eight seven a month and then one point two five per month.
Absolutely, absolutely, so we're working on right now is, is we're trying to figure out how we can. Pull employees over without there being any, anybody getting hurt or losing anything. Um, existing employees, it works very smooth for new employees if we, as soon as people come on to be able to do this. But from a tracking standpoint, um, Madam Vice Chair, it, it's all done through the munis software system. So there won't be, uh, a burdening of, of, of. Manual inputs or things like that, the system allows, our financial software system allows us to actually track it through the, through that. Um, which is currently how it's, it's done now, it would just be a modification of how we, of how it's deployed and available to people.
So I'm reading this that for the first year, they get five days. Um, and I'm confused a little, when it goes year one, new employees will accrue monthly, so new employees get. Fifteen days a year?
Yep, so we'd look at, but it would be five upfront and then accruing, or point eight seven each month, which accrue, uh, amounts to fifteen days. And then in your. The first month, the thirteenth month of employment, you'd start accruing at one point two five. So that first year, you're accruing a lesser amount, but your total amounts, you're basically front loading the first five, so people can take time. I gets, most, I'd say more times than not, when we hire people, that people have vacations planned, they have. You know, things that they're looking to do with their family. And we're sort of finding ways outside of the bylaws to try to accommodate people as best we can without it becoming a financial burden for us, which it hasn't. But it, we're trying to give people better quality of life and. Like I said, the, the number one issue I had, we talked about, we're in sixty-fifth percentile per pay. That hasn't been, for most cases, hasn't been an issue for bringing people on. The, the number one issue is when I, you know, I have to say to somebody, you have to give up your six weeks vacation, you're getting ten and you can't use it for. Six months and then another six months and, um, more times than not, like I said, people have things they've already planned out, so. It's hard sometimes to, we always say we'll work with you, but it's inconsistent, it's, it, we can do a better job if we, if we do.
Um, so this goes year one and two, um, I, I would find it really helpful if it was. Like what are we currently doing and what are we proposing? So I don't know how this differs from what we currently have, and this goes up to year two, what, what happens after year two? If since we're changing the policy.
Yeah, and, and, and just kind of, for, just pulling out of the weeds for just a second, it is supposed to be like a, a high level snapshot today. When we go through it again with the board, we'll have all this fleshed out and we'll spend some real time on it.
Well, without spending real time, have you looked at beyond year one and two?
Oh yeah, no, we have a, we have, with the vacation, we've looked at the entirety of it, so this was just to give you, for the new employee. It should probably say year zero, like, or maybe the first day onward for the first year, uh, day one to day three sixty-five.
No, I get that, thanks, I just was wondering, since they did all the work, this only goes out to year two. So I'm, I'm wondering what else they're proposing, is it stay the way it's currently set up?
So it's, it's, there's some tweaks on the backend of the vacation time after your first plateau. Because we're gonna, so basically, all employees will be able to. Earn the vacation, they have more vacation day one and earn up to the max, but the max doesn't increase, is the proposal that we've received, so. The twenty-five days is the max when you've been here for X amount of years. You'll get to that, that's not growing, it's just as you approach, I think it's one day every two years currently. And I think the suggestion is one day every year, add it to your total. And then you cap that amount, so it's a shorter period of time, you start higher up and you get to your cap quick, more quickly. But that grid is something we're, we're still fine tuning that, to be frank, um, we're just, for right now. Wanted to let you know vacation is something we've spent, we've already spent a lot of time on. We continue to spend time on, there was a meeting that was supposed to be scheduled this morning with Chief Hubby, myself, um. Pam, our payroll specialist and, um, Debbie. To kind of continue the conversation on this, unfortunately due to a couple of other priorities that popped up this morning, including. Restoration companies showing up and others, um, we weren't able to get through all of that, but, um, again, with the budget coming out. Tonight or tomorrow and with, um, this being a work session, the timing was I wanted to make sure we got through it. But yes, that, when we roll this out more formally, we'll give you all of that in great detail and we'll have a comparison of what it was to what it would be.
Yeah, I would think we'd have that discussion before it all gets rolled out, so at, at some point you're coming back with the, the. This is what it is now, this is what the changes are, all the changes for us to consider.
Yeah, no, Madam Vice Chair, so the process is very prescriptive in the bylaw. I dr- basically the personal dr- personal director creates it. Then there's a public meeting to discuss it. Then there's a, um, a formal, uh, any edits are made and then it's presented and discussed with the select board. So this is a, an in-between sort of primer for the board. Outside of the formal process, to just give everybody an update on what we've been working on, because we, I've been periodically giving updates the last year during my. Town administrator updates, so this is not formal, uh, public meeting that we're, we would discuss it in great detail.
So it would go to the public meeting before the boards presented with what the changes are?
That's per the bylaw, that's how the bylaws re- reads, but very explicitly, that's how it reads, order of operations. We can certainly add within that different things if the board would like us to, that's why I added this in, for example, was to get. Have this conversation right now, so people are aware of where we are and what's to come.
And, and that's good, because I mean, this is, this is not a short document. And we just got it yesterday, right, so there, there's, there's no chance in heck that anybody's had a chance to go through this thing.
Would not expect anyone to, like I said, it was more just that this is what we've been working on, this is what to expect, this is the timelines, these are some of the highlights, what we've been talking about. The group's done amazing work, they've done really incredible work, a lot of hours put into it.
And then, Kevin, I assume, is Catherine part of this conversation at this stage? Has she been part of your team on this?
For budgetary purposes, I try to make sure that I don't overwhelm any one department, uh, different projects we roll out. In this particular one, she's been made aware periodically, more recently, once we started to land on these things, I've had. A lot of conversations in the last twenty-four, forty-eight hours with her, um. With the budget coming out, really the only financial item on here. Immediate financial item that affects the budget is the longevity, the five-year longevity. Um, so the hope was, tonight to get a general idea of that there's any overarching concerns I need to be aware of, but I do. It is my recommendation and it is the recommendation of the committee, um. Uniformly, people are, who are, who are benefiting from it. One person in the committee and people, everyone else as well, that, to stay market, that is something that we should include, um. But Captain's, yes, Captain Gabriel's been involved in this.
I would think we definitely want a, a financial analysis of this to see the impact of these changes.
It's on the last slide, Madam Vice Chair, I'm gonna get, um, of the presentation I submitted.
Um, okay, this, this is, um, but. I don't think this was including everything. I mean, it's like, this is financial impacts, it just says vacation equals cap on how much is accrued, that's not a financial analysis, that's.
Back though, Madam Vice Chair, so in the case of the vacation, because the way we're setting it up where it's an ongoing accrual system. There's no dump and then accrual, it's basically you keep accruing until you get to a cap. And so by doing that, you're limiting what that end of career payout might be, because you can't hit your, your date. Accrue and then also get paid on those accruals and what the dump was. So that's just, there's no real number I can put to that, it's just that that is gonna be a cost savings for the town at end of career payments.
Well, how do, if you haven't put a number on it, how do you know that's gonna be a cost savings?
Because structurally, it's a cost savings, so basically if somebody, I mean. Somebody can make it forty-five dollars an hour, someone can make it twenty-five dollars an hour, somebody might have twenty-five vacation days, somebody might have ten vacation days. Somebody might accrue at point eight seven, somebody might accrue at one point two five, but whatever that is. Depending on this individual circumstance. We know that it's not gonna accrue, if somebody retired on their anniversary date. It, dollar for dollar, it's not gonna change, but that never happens, people retire sometime typically thereafter, and so whatever they're accruing in that sometime thereafter. That's not available on the books, becomes part of their payout at end of career, that goes away with an ongoing accrual system, just like the sick time would.
So Kevin, what are you looking for this evening?
All the purpose of tonight was, was to have a, um, give, provide an update to the board of what we've been working on. Make sure there isn't anything that, um, in here that is a non-starter or problematic with the board. Or any advice from the board as we continue to work through finalizing the recommendations, so before we get to that public. Meeting, there's, if there's anything that, um. We need to talk about more, um, in the vein of just transparency and communication, wanted to make sure I was had a chance to share this with everyone.
Well, I would have to say, since we got the document yesterday, it's an eighty-three page document, um, for the current policies. I have been able to read that and I don't really understand how all of this fits in, you know, that what is existing. What is down the road, what is the financial impact? I, I couldn't give you any input tonight, I, I'm not prepared to do that.
Aren't you saying you captured the highlights in this five-page PowerPoint?
High level, wasn't looking to get through every line that eighty-five, eight, hundred eighty-five pages, it's simply just a. This is what we've been focused on, these are the things we're talking about. And, you know, as we go through our budget for fiscal twenty-four, you know, these are. Some of these we've already talked about at length, some of these are things that, like, the only financial impact one that's new is the, uh, five-year longevity. Um, and then on that fourth side, it, it gives you a sense of what that looks like.
So, um, like for instance, the work from home policy, um, identified in the job description. After hours, telecommunication, closure of office space, other extreme circumstances, I, I don't understand what any of that means.
Yeah, I didn't really get through all the bullets, so the, um, sick time buyback is, we looked for new employees. Right now, there's a multiplier on the sick time buyback. Where you are paid, you can cap it, one thousand seven hundred sixty hours of sick time, two hundred twenty days. And if you retire fully maxed out on what's in your bank, you get to. At your current rate of time retirement, multiplied by the number of hours, multiplied by point two five, and that's your dollar payout. What we would do, which is similar what we did with, with all of our other three unions. Where they had twenty-five percent payouts, we're reducing this down to fifteen percent payouts for new employees as of. When this goes affect July one, twenty twenty-three, um. Obviously, we couldn't put a number to it right now, other than say it's a ten percent reduction in time of sick time buyback for people. Um, and then the work from home policy is, you referenced, Madam Vice Chair. Um, it's something that a lot of communities are looking at and we have invested in the technology to allow us to do so with, with. At COVID, a couple of years ago, we bought everybody laptops. And from time to time, there are circumstances where people, um, are either. Working from home, like, right now, um, if I was in my basement. Technically, I'd be working from home, so that's where the telecommunication component comes in there. If it's in the job description, like our digital communication coordinator, um, she does not need to be physically here to post on Facebook, um. And she does come in between, let's say, four to six hours weekly, uh, uh, three to. Four to five hours weekly, so about half of her hours are here, but half her hours are remote to be able to post in real time when we need her. That's an example where that telecommunication work from home would be allowed. And then, um, if there's a snowstorm or a water pipe breaks and we can't work in the building. Um, and I send people home, that's an opportunity for people to be able to work from home, not just to be home, um, and there's times too where. I, extreme circumstance might be if somebody has a relative who's going through chemotherapy. They need to drive them home that day and be physically home while they're recovering. They can open up the laptop and do the payroll that day, payrolls due, um, just gives people some opportunity to have some flexibility. It would be a very narrow policy, um, we've talked about this, that. It wouldn't be in perpetuity that somebody's working from home, wouldn't be that somebody every Wednesday they're working from home. In perpetuity would be, when something comes up. We would allow it if it makes sense to do so, through the recommendation of either the department with the authorization of town administrator. And if it's a department, through the authorization of town administrator. And then the last bullet, better clarity on comp time and flex time, um, we're making it very clear, comp time is for. Wage earners, flex times for salary earners, comp time, if you earn up to forty hours a week. If you have to work extra hours for a meeting or something else, technically you're eligible for overtime at time and a half. Comp times allows people, if they want to bank it, to use as vacation time. Allows them that flexibility, we can't force people to do it, but it's in the personal bylaw already, um. What we're doing here is, is saying that, that's, that's only eligible for the people who are on a forty-hour week schedule, which is the wage earners. But we do have people who work a lot, a tremendous amount of hours sometimes, who are not, um, wage earners, they're salary earners, they're department heads. And what we've always referred to it as flex time, and that's giving people the ability, if they get, getting their work done and something comes up. Um, that they can, you know, leave a little bit early on a Friday to go watch, you know. Sophie's last soccer game or, or whatever it might be, um, and just making sure that they're, they're completing their work in a timely fashion. It, it goes to the quality of life, um, that we want to create here in, in Topsfield for the, uh, for the employees. But again, top of the iceberg.
Um, just, what was the difference between someone who works forty hours a week, a wage earner, a salary earner?
Yeah, legally, if you're a wage earner, if you earn forty, if you work for, over forty hours a week, you are eligible for overtime. We typically do not do overtime, we've offered comp time. Um, however, if we offer comp time and someone says, no, I want overtime, then if they're working those extra hours, we have to give it at the time and a half. But, um. Comp time is, is specific for wage earners by, by state and federal law, um. For, for hourly employees, if you're, if you're a salaried employee, um. Some weeks you're probably gonna work, I mean, we've got a number of department heads on this call right now as an example of that, where people are working, um, beyond. A typical work schedule, um, and so it acknowledging that when people want to. They, if it's during the workday and they just need to get their oil changed. Yeah, if it's been, if it's been near over five thousand miles, you've been putting in. Budget season, you're putting in all those hours, you have a chance to go, go, get it done and come back and we'll, we'll keep it going. We just want to make sure people can still have the stresses of their lives not build up on them. Um, when they're working, you know, forty, fifty, sixty plus hours a week sometimes.
I remember before we had an issue with comp time. It was accruing at a great rate, I was, there was some kind of a legal issue that we could not do that, do you? Has that been brought up? There was a legal issue about the comp time?
Legal issue. There has been one employee who identified for me that a former, um. There was a time that it was told to an employee that they couldn't. Take overtime, they had to use comp time, that's not allowed, you have to allow people if they're working extra hours to, to be paid out for it.
So this would be their choice then, whether they were being paid overtime or getting comp time?
That's right.
And the vacation, I just, I, I don't know what the current policy is, um, can people just accrue all vacation time? Just like, it looks like this is sick time buyback, is there a vacation buyback?
There is, so, and, and the time when you leave the organization, um. Whatever's on the books, plus whatever you've accrued, but aren't, hasn't been technically granted to you, is what you're, you're given. Um, and you're paid out on that, um.
Is there a cap on vacation time or it's, you could just accrue it and end up with a year's payout at the end?
No, so if they, if, if this was smart in the first existing document, you can carry up to one week. So, you can, if you're eligible for four weeks and you have a week, and this happens more times than not. At the end of the year or when you're, you're, um. Your hire date, your anniversary date comes up, people many times are scrambling because they want to, they don't want to lose their time. So they'll carry a week, but then they'll, they'll burn through some time.
That's okay, as long as I know there's a cap, that, that was the main thing, so there is just a one-week cap. So the, the group that put this together, did they, um, similar to kind of like with the salary survey, did they reach out to other towns? To find out what those policies were?
Yeah, um, so the chair of the group was, was Chief Hubby, um, and Debbie was also very helpful. And other members of the group, um, they looked at the same fifteen communities that the salary survey used for the salary survey. So they, they tried to acquire as many, um, similar documents and reviewed and compared that to what our document read. And when we had specific things, we were looking at vacation time or longevity is, is a prime example. They looked to all their. Or, or if we didn't have the personal bylaw, we knew the community, um, someone on the group would reach out to. Somebody in those communities to ask them, you know, what, what's your longevity schedule for non-union employees look like? And gather the information that way. The goal was to make sure we were competitive. We were, we, with the salary survey, our goal was to make sure we were competitive from a compensation standpoint. The goal of this was to see, to make sure that we were being both fair and competitive with how we address the other things that. Make up a person's work experience.
So when it does come time for us to have to vote on it, um, the, is that information in a spreadsheet somewhere? So that, that it can help us assess, you know, where we're falling with other communities on each of these changes that are being proposed?
Yes, I, I mean, again, this, is the idea is to, to start informing the board now, if with the work and then. In the coming weeks and months is to put together more information for the board. Uh, and for that public hearing, cause it needs to be very robust. So everybody understands where we were and where we're, where, where we're going.
That would probably be helpful for the public hearing as well, because people will be probably asking, you know, what is it based on and where do we stand with others? And how might it help us retain people or attract?
All right, are there any other questions on this for now? All right, uh, I will fully, uh, admit that, uh, in my, uh, two and a half years on the board, I've only ever done a single executive session at a time. So I'm not really, uh, clear on how we formatically come in and out of executive session time and again. So if Boyd or Lynn can give me some guidance on that, I'd be happy to hear.
Sure, we just take the motion to enter into closed executive session and then we motion to leave it. Um, but when we enter it, we just let people know whether we're coming back or not.
Okay, so, but that's my question, because the way these motions read, it looks like we're coming back out of it. For a second to say, now we're going back into it?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I've never run into this before where we've had multiple in a row, um. It must be because the, the exemption is different in each one.
Yeah, so yeah, I'm assuming that's it. By rule of the law, we can't just. Say, hey, we're going into executive session for three things at once. We have to do it one at a time.
I, I never knew that. So Kevin, that's legally what KP says? We can't say we're going in for these two reasons?
So there was, um, Beth, Debbie, Sam and myself had a conversation about that process. And that was what was shared for, from a process standpoint.
Was that from KP?
I did not check with KP to see formality wise if that was necessary, but there was, I, this was wrong, was pretty out of it. This was the process to undertake.
I mean, I'm fine doing it. It's just, I, I don't imagine there's gonna be anybody who's waiting for us to pop back out to say, hey. We're going back in, but we, we will do that if that's, uh, if that's, uh, what we're to do.
Boyd, you're on mute. I think you're trying to talk.
Boyd is on.
Boyd, you're on mute.
There you go.
Uh, I've, I've never experienced it before in my twenty years, uh, but the fact that I don't see it as a big deal.
You go. That's what I'm saying. I mean, ultimately, I think it's a, whatever, that's what we're gonna do. So we'll just go ahead and, uh.
Entering and exiting is not a big deal. You do it and you do it and it's simple.
Yep, so that's what we'll do. Uh, okay, so by roll call vote, the board will enter into closed executive session in accordance with Mass General Law. Thirty-eight, twenty-one A under exemption number three to conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting. May have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation possible of the public body. And the chair so declares, the board in this case will return to regular open session. Uh, and again, in, uh, and we have to say specifically what we're talking about here. We're specifically discussing, uh, the ongoing negotiations around, uh, a trash contract. Uh, so I will move to roll call vote to, uh, approve going into executive session. Mr. Jackson.
Oh, I'll second it, Marshall.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Lynn. I had so much going on.
I know.
All my, my nitty and my gritty. Uh, with that second, uh, and assuming there's no discussion. We'll go to roll call vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Bermudez.
Aye.
And Mr. Hook is an aye, so we are entering.